This is the Planning Commission for August 15th. Welcome here and our television viewing audience. So we will go ahead and start with roll call.
Commissioner Esau Lofstra.
Here.
Chair Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Kiellein.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
And Vice Chair Lamott is absent.
Yes. All right, so our first order is approving the agenda. We have four consent items on the agenda and we had three public hearing items. The last public hearing item, 177 Frustock Avenue, was pulled from our agenda. So if there's anyone here who is interested in 177 Frustock Avenue, that has been pulled from the agenda. So that's no longer on it. Thank you for coming. You're welcome to go home.
And staff also wanted to add a condition to 19 Bell, Agenda Item 3. It's a condition that the applicants, a neighbor requested and the applicants have agreed to not add any new windows to the western side of the structure.
Okay. Okay, so no new windows to western side?
I was actually going to make a motion to move that from consent to discussion. The 19 Bell.
Pull 19 Bell and move it to discussion?
Uh huh.
Okay, so there's a motion to pull 19 Bell Avenue and move it?
Madam Chair, you're still on approval agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. That would be afterwards. So we are going to approve the agenda with only amendment of the 177 Frustock.
I think you have to pull it.
And before we move the agenda, we do consent?
Yeah, because you have to move it.
We'll do consent next.
But it's being pulled from consent on to the hearing item.
Either way, we'll pull it afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah? All right? Okay. So approval of the agenda and then we'll do consent?
I'll, motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. So now we will go on further with the consent items. If there's anyone here who has any questions or concerns before we go ahead and approve all of these consent items or take them off of the agenda?
Madam Chair, forgive me. You want to just mention any time for public comments on things not on the agenda?
Thank you, sorry. I missed one. Is there anyone here to speak to an item that is not on this agenda? Would anybody like to come up and address an issue that's not on the agenda? You have three minutes? Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Okay, now, back to consent items. Let's start with a motion to pull Bell Avenue.
I wanted to pull 19 Bell Avenue and move to discussion. Particular interest on the parking situation.
So, motion to pull. Is there seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So 19 Bell Avenue's been pulled from the consent items. If there's anyone in the audience that has any questions on the three remaining or concerns that they want to say anything before we go ahead and approve those consent items? Okay? Well then, let's go ahead and take a motion to approve the consent items with the, oh, we don't have to deal with the amendment now.
Make a motion to approve consent items 1, 2, and 4 as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So consent items 1, 2, and 4 have been approved. If you were here, those are approved. There is a 10-day appeal period with a $500 appeal process. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So... Is this a process question?
Where would I be in Bell?
So stay here. We'll be doing that one. Well, that's now on a discussion item. So yes, we'll get to you. Thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and do 19 Bell as our first. Is it, can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That's what you usually do, actually.
So let's go ahead and have a staff report on 19 Bell.
Okay, the project encompasses remodeling the existing 1,382 square-foot residence to create a great room that will include the kitchen and living areas while remodeling the existing kitchen area into a third bedroom. The remodel will not increase the square footage of the residence. The project requires two discretionary permits, a use permit because the parcel doesn't meet the minimum size and width requirements in the RD 5.5-7 zone, and a variance to place the third required parking stall in the side yard setback. The town code requires that single-family residences with three bedrooms have, actually even with two bedrooms, have three 9-by-19-foot parking spaces. The proposal provides three onsite parking spaces, one in the garage, one in the driveway, and one at a 90-degree angle to the driveway parallel to the adjacent street. The space proposed in the front yard will require the approval of an exception to the town code because it encroaches two feet into the required five-foot minimum side yard setback. Parking in this manner is out of character with the neighborhood. You don't find other homes where the entire front yard is taken up with parking, but they have screened it with landscaping. It won't really be visible unless a car is using it and they're paving it with gravel. Parking is at a premium in this neighborhood and allowing an increase in the number of bedrooms without the required number of parking spaces being provided is not a good precedent to set. The provision of the third required space, although not in an optimum location, will meet the town requirements. The location of the residence on this narrow lot with the structure so close to the front property line limits the owner's options for providing additional parking. And staff is recommending that you approve the application based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report, including the condition that there be no new windows in the western side of the house.
Okay, so the way that we're going to do this, just for those of you waiting, is we're going to have questions for staff from us, then we'll bring up the applicant to present your project and we can ask questions of you. We'll take comment from the public and then we'll bring it back to us for a decision. So does anybody have any questions for staff?
I got the tricky one tonight. Has the commission in the past approved similar parking variances in this kind of setting recently?
They've approved parking variances to allow parking to encroach into the side yard setback and to be located in the front yard, but not in quite this constrained of a location. So...
Usually it's on the steep hills winding up.
Right, yeah.
And we have approved things like tandem parking and, you know, whatever we can do to get, keep it on the property. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and say a few words about the project? Come on up.
Dan Cerimelli, applicant for 19 Bell. Is that it? Okay. We're just planning on doing a remodel. Myself, I'm going to be the only resident there, so I don't have any intentions in the near future of actually parking in the front yard. I'd prefer not to, actually, myself. We do meet the requirements. There is also, we noticed that if there's on-street legal parking, it's not available, but we do have a couple of spaces in front of the house that is actually available. We've taken some pictures that are in front. And again, we're in the flats, so no one's parked in the hills or anything of that matter. So I don't think parking will be much of an issue, at my house at least.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
I don't know. I don't, I didn't study the plans too much in detail, but what's the proposed material for the parking space?
We're hoping to do gravel.
Okay. Because I was going to propose that if, if, the intent is to have it as an available space but not necessarily try to use it, at least it could look somewhat more like a landscape element.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Sit down. If there's anyone from the audience who would like to come up and speak on this item, come up and you have three minutes at the podium. State your name and your address. Okay, then we'll bring it back here and have a discussion. I don't know if you want to start off since you...
Yeah. So I think my concern is knowing how tight parking is in that neighborhood and community in particular. I think my concern is more about the precedent encroaching into the setbacks and now as more homeowners decide to remodel and add on and get bigger, what that does to the character of the neighborhood, what that does to the density, what that is going to do to our community as a whole. So that was just more my concern and I wanted to bring it up for discussion with the other commissioners.
Yeah, and I would just, these, a lot of these lots that we have in town are, you know, we've, I don't know when it was, the 1970s or 80s, they established the use, kind of the minimum requirements and a lot of these lots are way smaller. So in this case, a 40-foot wide lot creates a lot of constraint. The houses are placed where they're placed. I'm trying to look at this. It looks like this was a, this is a two-bedroom, two-bath residence that's being remodeled, but it's still going to be two-bedroom? Or are they adding a bedroom?
They're increasing it from two bedrooms to three bedrooms.
And that's the requirement for the parking?
Right.
Is the third, the third space. But I would say, and I know this is a, every neighborhood has its own character, but we've approved actually quite a few parking spaces that are absolutely squeezed in going up the hill where there's, we want to maintain 12 feet of width. And I see this as it, it's the side yard setback that's being affected, not even the front setback.
Right, the code allows you to park in your front setback.
Right. So it's the side yard setback that is being encroached by two feet. But I agree with at least the approach on the design to use something that's more, what did you call it, landscape? More like a landscape feature than a gravel lot. If pavers with grass or something like that is possible, I think that would be recommended, at least from my perspective.
I've got a quick question. You had mentioned that the parking, the three required parking was required whether it was a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom. So part of, it's currently a two-bedroom.
Right.
But it doesn't, so it's legal noncomplying currently, it's legal noncomplying.
Currently, it doesn't meet the parking requirements for the size house it is now.
So adding another bedroom isn't adding another, technically, they should have three spaces right now. So if they were remodeling their kitchen and not adding a bedroom, they'd still be required to bring the parking up to code, correct?
If they, yes, yeah. If they were doing a significant amount of work.
I don't know if that has any impact on your thoughts?
Yeah.
Okay.
That clarifies. Thank you.
So if we were going to make, going on the landscaping issue, that would be like another condition that would be added on to it? Is that, adding that condition on to it, that the paving area or the material used for that parking space be permeable and, how would you phrase that?
Yeah, you could just say that it be pavers with some kind of landscaping that can grow through or...
It's already denoted as gravel on the plans.
Yeah, they don't like that.
You don't like the gravel, excuse me?
They were recommending something like pavers with stuff that's more landscape-looking rather than gravel.
Something more landscape looking.
And I'm seeing head nodding, so I'm assuming that's not going to be much of a problem with this vice. So I would go ahead and make that amendment to the conditions, to add a condition. Where's the description of the gravel that we could just change to?
I don't...
Oh, they're on the, they're on the plans? Okay.
Well, could we just make it part of Condition 6? A proposed third parking space must be completed, the appropriate section of fence must be removed. So a proposed third parking space must be composed of...
Must be completed with...
...pavers and landscaping material? I don't know the right term from an architect's perspective.
Landscaping, pavers, kind of referred to as...
And could you say permeable?
Turf block?
Permeable turf block?
Yeah.
Permeable turf block?
And it's not a brand, it's just the idea.
Okay. So permeable turf block pavers?
Proposed third parking space must be complete, must be constructed with turf block, permeable pavers.
Uh huh.
And...
And the appropriate section of fence.
And must be completed and the appropriate section of fence must be removed prior to the final project inspection.
Okay.
And then, it sounds like, based on staff, we would add a Condition 9, that no windows would be added to the west side of the structure?
Okay. So no windows shall be added to the west side. Okay. We can entertain a motion then with those two?
So make a motion to approve as amended. John, do you want those again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So approve with the following amendments, that Condition 6 of the recommended conditions of approval would read, "A proposed third parking space..." Help me out.
"...must be completed with permeable turf block pavers and the appropriate section of fence must be removed."
Yep. Since you wrote it down and I didn't. And that adding a Condition 9, that no windows would be added to the west side of the structure.
All right, so we have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, Application 1328 is approved. There is a 10-day appeal with a $500 fee for appeal. And we're on to the next item. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to 130 Wood Lane now. If you could get the staff report on that one.
So if he, what his plans are. But it will be re-noted if it comes back on the agenda.
All right, so staff report on Application 1323, item, public hearing item number 5.
Okay, in early April of 2013, the building official noted that a new carport was constructed on the property in the required setbacks without the required discretionary permits or a building permit. So the owner, we contacted the owner, he has now applied for the use permit and a side setback variance to legalize the 234-square-foot open carport in its current location, where it's been constructed into the minimum five-foot western side yard setback and maintains less than a half a foot setback from that property line. The proposal requires two discretionary permits. It requires a use permit because the parcel doesn't meet the minimum size and width requirements based on its slope. The town code requires that residential properties be provided with at least one covered parking space and the site currently has none. The design of the carport is in keeping with the design of other covered parking structures in the neighborhood and throughout Fairfax and the design itself doesn't change the single-family character of the site. The second discretionary permit, as we explained before, is because it was built in the required side yard setback. And the problem that staff had when we reviewed this is that we have to be able to make legal findings that...
Can you speak up a little bit into the mic? Someone's having a...
Is it someone in the back? Because I could move closer to the front. So the purpose of the variance process is to allow an exception from the code when you can't comply. And the front of the site is level and there are paved parking areas where the carport could have been constructed in compliance with the code. It also could just be shifted over the one corner, it could be twisted so that it meets the setback. So we were able to make the findings to recommend approval of the use permit, but we were unable to make the findings for the setback variance. So we're recommending that you approve the project subject to the carport being moved out of the required or to the five-foot setback after a building permit is obtained for the structure.
Okay, are there any questions for staff about this?
I guess what I'm wondering is, kind of given the discussion from the last one, if the carport were placed on the opposite side and the two uncovered parking spaces would be shifted, would there be, basically, we would be, there wouldn't be anything to approve because the uncovered parking space, if it were within the side yard setback, based on your findings, would be allowable?
The, you're not supposed to be parking in your side yard setback. So people do it all the...
So this is a, either way, this is a...
Right.
Whether there's a carport or not.
The code, two different sections of the code. One restricts parking structures in the side yard setback and then there's a separate section that restricts parking in the side yard setback.
So this is, while the carport seems to be the issue...
It would be even if it was parking.
It would be an issue even if it was just uncovered and the determination is there's space and it's flat, so that this wasn't a, that wasn't a limiting factor and the width of this property, as opposed to the last one, is 100 feet...
Right.
On this parcel, so there is space.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Looking at the plans, it seems that the shed space, that there's still room if one wanted to move the shed closer to the house and the carport could be moved along and that would remove it out of the setback as well? Or is there any limiting factors? I looked at the plans, I couldn't see any.
It looks like there's space to move it. It wouldn't create any kind of access problems. So there's a number of ways it could be accomplished in compliance with the code.
And, and just so we're clear as we go through, if we're following the recommendations of staff, as long as the carport is, as the applicant comes back for a building permit with the carport located somewhere inside of the setbacks, regardless of where it is, that, that would be, it wouldn't have to come back.
Right, that would be acceptable.
That would be acceptable.
Right.
Any other questions or should we bring the applicant up? Let's go ahead and bring the applicant up. Tell us your name and give us a little...
Hi, John Leimer, 130 Wood Lane. Thank you. Where would you like me to begin, just kind of the process? Sure. So the carport was built, my father gifted me a classic car and he asked, is there a covered place to put it? And I said, there isn't, but I can make one. The two parking spots in the driveway for my fiancee and myself, we do have a roommate who kind of tucks in behind one of those cars. So the reason the carport was built was to cover this car that's not driven much at The reason I built it where it is is because it lines up with the existing shed. I heard, can we move the shed for it? Well, there is a tree in front of the shed. So that's, that's kind of why it went where it is. There was a, when we bought the property, there was a boat storage in there, in that spot where the car's currently is and the carport is. So it, my head, it made sense to put it right there. Talked with the neighbors, they were cool with it and yeah, that's kind of where it ended up. I've looked into the cost of moving it and it's about $5,000 to move the carport and that's, I can't do that. So I'm, I'm hoping that, since the neighbors are fine with it, it keeps in lines with the house, keeps in lines with the property, I'm hoping that we can kind of leave it where it is and say, I'm sorry.
Questions for the applicant? Anyone have any questions? Nope. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thanks.
And now we'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone here who would like to speak on this item, come forward. Three minutes? Okay. Then I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. As always and as the staff said, in order for us to approve variances to the code, we have to make findings to be able to make it, to fit within the town code. So in order for us, if we wanted to approve it, we'd have to come up with some finding that fits within those findings. Otherwise, we set a precedent of not, of approving things outside of findings. So let's just, we're just going to have a discussion and if we have any questions.
So I would say, you know, this is, this is a tough one. A lot of times, we actually are, the way it's always been done doesn't mean that it met the code and it's, we've actually had applicants that were new home buyers that bought what was there and in the inspection, it was determined that what was built wasn't even compliant and then we've gone through long-term permitting processes. And I do appreciate the candor and, you know, it's, there was a boat there before and there's, it's probably never been in compliance, it sounds like, if a boat's been parked there or not. But as Chairperson Hamilton said, we have, also have to find, make findings for an exception and there are many cases and many properties in Fairfax where exceptions certainly have been granted and in many cases because of the constraints are warranted. And in those cases, staff does, does see that and makes those recommendations and findings. And in this case, as, you know, I feel as presented by staff, that certainly, this isn't one of those parcels, given this, this issue, and I think that's where, at least from my perspective, we're asked to give exceptions quite often. And if there's space, we want to take advantage of that space to meet the, conform, to conform with the town codes. So, and it's not a, I don't see it as a fault necessarily of yours, it wasn't intentional, it's just, you know, sometimes that's how these things pop up and it's unfortunate.
Um, I don't know. As far as a carport goes, I mean, it is an attractive carport. Normally, carports don't look as attractive as this, but one should always check the town first before contemplating a building project because you should always verify your setbacks and all that. So I mean, I could support the use permit on the project, but I'm having trouble supporting the variance right now.
I feel equally stuck in, you know, that trees not further out and blocking some aspect of your land that makes it difficult to conform with the standard. So I think unfortunately, I'm in the same spot as everyone up here, that the use permit seems reasonable, but the variance is one that I don't think we have grounds to be able to make.
Anyone?
I think, hello?
Sure. You can make it short.
In regards to moving the carport out from the setback, that would put the post in the middle of the parking spot, so that, I just wanted to address that piece.
Make a motion? I know we don't want to do it. I know we're tired, I know we're thinking, but we don't really have much. There's a number of...
So I guess the last question, and I, we've heard it before, so I just want to confirm we're, if we're approving the use permit, but we're not approving the variance, the applicant can come straight to staff with any location that they feel they'd prefer?
Right.
I think, we've heard it, it is, the approach and the design was certainly reasonable and so there's no concern over how it looks. It's simply the placement within the setback on a parcel that has lots of space, which is rare in Fairfax. So I would make a motion to approve the, however it's... Okay, sorry. Go ahead. Yeah.
I would just like to make one other point to the applicant, that you are allowed to also appeal our decision to the town council, so you have another opportunity to state your case as well.
And given that, I'd like to make a motion, and we are, do we make two motions or do we make one motion? Can we make a motion to approve the staff report? Or do we have to make two separate motions?
I would just read what we wrote in the staff report, which is, you approve the use permit, but deny the variance, subject to the parking structure being relocated to a conforming location.
There it is. So, I'd make a motion to approve the use permit, but deny the required setback and parking regulation variances. I didn't see where you found that.
Anything else to your motion?
No, but if somebody wants to say it better, they're welcome to.
So we have a motion.
Second the motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. There is a 10-day appeal period with a $500 fee. And the application 1323 was partially approved and partially not, based on that motion. Thank you for coming. All right, moving on to hearing item number six, 40 Forest Terrace. And staff report.
Okay, the applicants are proposing to construct a 216-square-foot expansion and remodel of the upper attic living space of the residence to install a new stairway connecting the first and second floors and to include a bathroom, dressing room, and one dormer, and an expanded master bedroom area and a second dormer. The project does not constitute a 50% remodel and the new construction will not encroach into any required setbacks. Therefore, the project does not require design review or a variance. It does require the approval of a use permit because based on the slope of the property, it doesn't conform to the minimum size and width requirements. The proposed dormer addition and remodel will increase the total living space square footage of the residence, as we said before, by 216 square feet from 1,840 square feet to 2,056 square feet. We checked with the Marin County Tax Assessor and houses in the neighborhood on similarly, similarly sized and sloped properties range in size from 1,048-square-foot house on a 5,300-square-foot parcel to a 2,195-square-foot house on a 5,800-square-foot parcel. So while the applicants are proposing one of the largest homes in the neighborhood, it is located on one of the largest parcels at 7,672 square feet. The residence complies with the floor area ratio regulations and the lot coverage regulations set forth in the town code. And therefore, we're recommending that you approve the application based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Okay, questions of staff? I had a really quick one that I was confused on. In the first part of your staff report, it says that it's non-conforming lot coverage, a 38%, as opposed to 35%. But then you, at the very end, you talk about complying with floor, with the far and lot coverage.
You are absolutely correct. It's legal non-conforming now and they aren't changing the lot coverage.
So they're not increasing the non-conformity?
Right, because the additions all occurring within the footprint of the existing house.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it doesn't comply?
Right. And I, and I should remind you that this, these people applied for discretionary permits before to try to keep a deck located in the side yard setback, which was denied by the planning commission, but you agreed to allow them to use that to stage on while they're under construction and they, you know, they're asking to also, they want some more time before they remove it, yeah.
And is that why you put the removal at the end of the process as opposed to before? Sometimes you, you put requirements before you get going, you have to do this to make sure it gets done and sometimes you don't.
Right, it's, it's a, it's a pretty deep, long, deep lot. And so they really, it's difficult for them to stage. They have a small outdoor area, they couldn't stage from forest because it's too far of a hike up the hill. So, we're okay with them keeping it until, before the project final, they'll have to remove it.
So, I'm just looking back at the, the different changes. So, cumulatively, all the changes that have been made over the last, I think, three applications haven't, together, they don't constitute a 50% remodel.
Well, the way that, the way the code reads, the fire code, it's, you have, the construction has to occur within a year for you to add up the building permits and so they.
But what about the town, the towns 50%? Because it's also on.
This, this, this project for, for bill, for planning, it's not a 50% remodel. They're only affecting the top floor, they aren't changing any of the structural, anything structural on the first floor or on the bottom floor.
And just, and I don't, like, exactly recall, I didn't, if there was other work done inside in the past applications.
Yeah, let me remind.
Those would add up together to be.
Well, at fir-, at first, staff was under the impression that the whole attic and the basement had been improved, improved illegally. At that point, we thought it was, but even just legalizing what was there was a 50% remodel. But they were able to provide statements from neighbors and records from the county proving that the ba-, the lower floor and the attic were built that way as living space. So, this project to add two dormers off of the attic is, is not a 50% remodel based on our definition of 50% remodel.
This one, I just didn't know how many other changes had been made over the past three years.
Yeah, they had.
Cumulatively, which is the way that the, that our town code now works, right? It's the 50%, if you've done some work and it's under 50%, but you come back for another project, if it was done after 2010, it adds up and it, it's a cumulative.
Do you know for how long? Do we have a timeframe?
I remember when we passed it, it was like 2010, I believe, wasn't it?
I didn't think, I didn't think ours did that. I thought only the fire department did that.
I think that's, I thought that's how we had approached it.
But at any rate, what they've done bef-, what they did before, they didn't change structural members of the house, they just, you know, they, they moved, they redid the stairway, so.
Right, it was the deck and the stairway and the.
Right, and so they didn't.
Spa was most of our.
You have to structurally alter the house in order for us to count that square footage as nu-, as new or affected. So the work that they did to, to make it more functional, didn't change structural members. So we didn't count it as, you know, a building permit that would affect that square footage.
Okay.
Yes. I know we count differently than the fire department, because they count just wall, anyhow, we won't get into that. Any other questions for staff? Okay, then let's go ahead and bring the applicant up to present the project.
Hello, it's nice to be back before you. I think I've been back, I don't know, I think this is probably the third or fourth time. Hopefully, this will be the last. The only thing I would correct, I'm sorry, Linda, is I think on this project, you described that we're going to be doing work on a stairway and we won't, it's already, that was done as part of the, I think, the original permit.
Okay.
So in fact, the scope.
No work on the stairway?
No work on the stairway. So the scope of the work is primarily the dormers. So, again, I'm, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
One thing I forgot, you did, we did receive a letter from a neighbor, which I, at the, just today, and so it's in front of you. Apparently, someone had handed out some anonymous flyers in the neighborhood and he felt the need to respond to the anonymous flyer. So you might wanna, when we're done, take a minute to read it.
Thank you.
And so, I, I did wanna bring that up. It's, we've had a number of hearings over the last year that have, in one way or another, been about issues around noise and the noise ordinance. We had the, the Good Earth facility in noise early in the morning. And then we had a discussion that went on two or three, actually four meetings, related to, well, it started out as leaf blowers and it sort of evolved to looking at the noise ordinance. So, before I make my comment, where do we stand with the readings of that ordinance?
We presented your recommendations to the town council at this last meeting and we are now drafting the language changes in ordinance form to amend the noise ordinance, which would restrict the hours of operation for leaf blowers and power equipment, which is now allowed during the weekday from eight in the morning to eight at night. They've carved, the proposal is to carve two hours off of the evening and move it back from eight to six during the weekday. And on the weekends, where it's allowed now from nine to six, it would be from nine to four on weekends and holidays. So there would be a little relief. The first reading will presumably take place on September, the first Wednesday of September, the second reading the first Wednesday of October, and then that ordinance change would go into effect 30 days later in the beginning of November.
Okay. So, that noise ordinance is related to things that are not sort of under construction or building permits, but it's just general noise in the, in the community, in the neighborhood. During those meetings, we had lots of input and, and concern from some of the citizens and, and in specifically bringing up the long-term construction projects that seem to go on and on. And, so I want to ask you, in terms of this, your project, because I know we've, you've been here a number of times, the concerns we heard from the public during, about noise in general, was specifically on your project and, and how it has carried on over a number of years now. And, and the way I look at this is, it looks like another few months of work. So, I think one thing is, my question for you is, do you anticipate continuing to, to do small pieces of work over a long period of time? Do you see this ending? And if there are conditions that we feel that the commission needs to put on tied to noise and duration and things like that, would you be amenable? I mean, we'll be discussing them, would, would you be amenable to something like that?
Absolutely. I mean, I do believe people should have quiet enjoyment of their property and, God, if I could find a contractor who would work till eight o'clock at night, I would have hired him a long time ago. So, I, I'm fully in favor of any of the type of noise restriction ordinances or limiting the times and dates or days that you can do construction. That won't be, that will not be a problem at all. And I think in order to keep a happy marriage, we want to try and keep this project as short as possible. So, once we get going, provided we can get the contracted show up, we'll get it done.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I don't have any. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open it up to the audience. If anyone is here that would like to make a statement on this project, come up, state your name and your address, and then you've got three minutes.
My name is Marsha Wildvine. My husband Pete and I own the duplex at 399 Forest Avenue, which is directly to the south of 40 Forest Terrace. I'm thankful to the chair and the members of the board for your attention and consideration in my three minutes of time. I'm alarmed by the proposal of the dormer addition. Very nervous that I may not be able to express to you the overwhelming distress this dormer addition will cause my family. I ask your patience as I state the reasons that we object to this dormer addition. My objection is that the dormer addition will be so high up over our house that it will rob us of our privacy in our own home. This addition will loom three and a half stories over our property, with the basement, first, second, and third floor attic rising up four stories. It is far, far the tallest building in the neighborhood. The addition of the dormers will greatly increase its visual dominance in the neighborhood. My husband, a senior construction engineer of 30 years, has done a sightline study that shows that the south side dormer will overlook our entire house, look directly into our kitchen, dining, kitchen area, our kitchen and dining nook, our garage upon our home office, and both our front and backyard. Actually, it is so high that it will overlook our entire roof line, peer down over our whole house onto the other side of our house and into our front yard, the neighbor's front yard, and out across Forest Avenue. For the rest of our neighbors, the dormer, at least the south side dormer, will be clearly visible from Forest Avenue, Mirna Avenue, and even Creek Avenue, which is one block away. Pete did not do a sight, sightline study of the impact of the north side dormer. Our house is also very close, their house is very set, close to the property line and at one point, the eaves of their roof on the south side are about three feet from our property line. The two houses are extremely close together on small lots in a highly dense neighborhood. This large dormer, it's a 12-foot expanse with windows, will virtually loom over our heads. Our upstairs unit is tiny with only 550 square feet, so outdoor living is in constant use. With the dormer hanging directly over our backyard, not one square inch of our property would be private. Our deck, patio, and the meditation garden would be so exposed, I think I would find them unusable. Our neighbor would look directly into our kitchen and eating area and onto our home office. I, I really can't imagine how we would possibly live like that. Our downstairs unit is also small, at 950 square feet, so that the front door patio and the garden is our place to socialize and eat. Remarkably, this dormer will overlook our whole house and spoil that privacy as well. This is difficult, but privacy from these new neighbors is critically important to us because they have been hostile and intimidating since I brought the planning commission's attention to their tools during these propane attacks. They have frightened us with very aggressive attacks and because other neighbors are here, I will not mention what those are unless you ask for them. I'm very reluctant even to say that in public, but I felt you may not understand why in this case, our privacy is so important. Their other big concern is the potential financial losses that we will incur. We've invested a lot of time and money to create lovely outdoor spaces and it is truly the best place to be in our home. If you permit this dormer, it will cost us the enjoyment and use of our property. As well, it will cost us on the selling price of our home and also the cost of long-term rental income due to the spoiling of our property's desirability. We'll also lose short-term rental income because it's very hard to rent a home or keep renters staying living a few feet away from a construction site. As I shared with you during the noise ordinance hearing, we've already lost three good tenants during the last two years due to the personal, Pearl's back-to-back construction projects and consequently are currently not renting out either of our units for the first time in 15 years, which of course amounts to the total loss of our rental income. As I looked at the architect's plans, the remodel of the third floor is for one extremely large, 791-foot, square-foot master bedroom. The plans show that the two already existing dormers will be used as a, already existing dormers will be used as a computer room and the other as a library. The addition of the dormer on the north side has no designated use other than just more space. With the already existing 500 square, 75 square feet, without any additions, that seems really like a lot for one bedroom, do they really need another addition? We're a family that has lived in a 550-square-foot unit, and we're three. And they're already a large house, I think it's like 1,841 square feet for one couple. It seems that the library or computer room that they plan could be relocated elsewhere and that space used to build the bathroom. Or, at worst, at least the north side dormer could be used at the, as building the bathroom. But I'm sure my other neighbor on the other side wouldn't like that either. The basement is, there's a basement bathroom directly below in a, in the basement and that would provide easy plumbing of the bathroom in either of those locations. I hope that you, the chair and the planning commission, will agree that one dormer addition of 804, 84 square feet is not a necessity to their remodel plans. I dearly hope that the planning commission will weigh the luxury of 84 square feet of additional unnecessary space against the tremendous cost it will have to my family's lives. We also hope that you deny the addition of the dormers as a way to greatly reduce the construction time of the remodel. Our neighborhood peace has been destroyed for almost two years of daily construction noise from this one property. The toll on my own health and well-being has been traumatic. We are still facing years more of daily construction noise from this project, even without the additional dormers. My husband Pete, after looking at the plans, believes that the remodel, which is extensive of that fourth, third floor attic, would take almost two years at the pace they've been working. Also, the very construction of that dormer on the south side would be an extreme hardship on us as the noise, lead-based dust, and the men would be directly working, exposed to us only mere feet away. I ask you to please consider, as you consider permitting this addition, to think of how you might feel if for the last two years, you lived right next to a construction site with a constant noise, skills and hammering, the toxic dust, the parade of workers that see through our windows, and the construction truck park, trucks that are parked in front of a garage, the yelling, the music, the team workers, and how you may also just wish for one day of your old peaceful home. I don't really know how we would survive two more years of construction and I know that the loss of priv-, privacy would be devastating. Thank you again. I ask that you do not permit the addition of the attic dormer, at least on the south side. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to come up? And I'll remind you again, we'll have three minutes. State your name and address in three minutes.
Yes, hi, my name's David Hernandez. I live at forty-five, directly across the street from the said property. And yeah, there's way too much noise. It's been going on for years. Before they even moved in, there was construction for over a year, and it's gone on and on and on. And the construction workers continually park in my driveway, block me in, block me out. They flip me off when I tell them to move their vehicles. They argue with me, tell me they need to park there when there's open space at these people's residence. They're not home, and people come and work there and park in my driveway. There's noise that just won't quit. It's, it's endless. I don't know if the folks at four, at the said residence realize that living on a hill that we live on is like a megaphone. Noise travels. I can hear everything they say when they have a party in their, in their garden area. And I try to keep my noise down, and if somebody wants me to turn it down, then so be it, let me know. But rude construction workers, it's just, it doesn't work. And construction that goes on year after year, and then we want more and more, and we want parking, and we want, I mean, they have parking on Forest Avenue, they have parking on Forest Terrace, but there is always a shortage of parking there. And when the construction guys come, they park in other people's parking spots, including my driveway. I'm in extreme chronic pain. I don't have time or effort to argue with people. I've lived in Fairfax since nineteen sixty-five, with the exception of about five years. It's just become too much, and I'm against it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just say?
Yes.
Please feel free to call the police department if anyone is blocking your driveway.
They've done that, and they did nothing.
Well.
They came up and said, "Well, watch, continue."
Okay.
State your name and address.
Tony Udis, seven Forest Terrace, Fairfax. I've lived on Forest Terrace since twenty-three years. I've lived in Fairfax since nineteen sixty-something, two or three. And I've walked Forest Terrace there, and that addition to the attic would block the view and increase its presence on the Forest Terrace side, but would increase its presence even more on the Forest side. And the building's already non-conforming as it is for the lot, and adding more square footage up is just another way to get around it. So, you know, I think the importance here is to really look at the aesthetics that's trying to be kept in our neighborhood and the presence of large buildings in it, and, you know, the, the, well, I would even also think about the neighbors, you know, as well too. So, I mean, I think that the attic would just block the view and just cause more of a presence in the neighborhood of this building. It's already large, very large as it is.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
My name's Peter Wildvine, at three nine nine Forest Avenue. My wife Marcia and I own the house next door, as my wife said. I want to thank you for your time. I know this is, it, this is going to go on a little bit longer than three minutes, so I ask for a teeny bit of patience. My primary request is to have that, that south-facing dormer not be allowed. It's, it's our most important request, and it has the most impact on our property and our lives, as my wife talked about. I have a few other objections and requests that I'd like to voice now. The first of our concerns is the duration of the noisy construction. That seems to be an ongoing element here, and, and already there's been crews for two solid years. They've done work from curb to curb on their newly purchased house. Here's, here's a short list of what they've done. The garage foundation, the garage driveway, twenty consecutive days of jackhammering to dig out what was supposed to be a koi pond and ended up being a heated pool, landscaping construction, and then a whole year of construction to remodel the second floor, and then followed by eight months of daily construction in the foundation and the first floor. So unfortunately, this is, obviously, it's dragged on for us neighbors. This is, it's really critical for my wife Marcia and I. She suffers from fibromyalgia and is homebound in pain most days. And with fibromyalgia, loud noise worsens her pain. So I've watched her health decline disastrously through the constant long-term assault of the noise from the construction. I'm truly worried about this, this next endurance of noisy construction. I kindly ask that you take it into consideration for her health and the suffering that, that will happen if you grant this permit. If it does get approved, if this project does get approved, to our great objection, I would ask that the condition of approval, that the project be limited to six months for completion in order to mitigate the hardship on us for the construction noise. By not permitting that southern dormant, dormer, that could increase the feasibility that this six months could be met. Like my wife said, I am a construction engineer, thirty years of experience, and based on my observations of their projects, I can tell that they're very inefficient and under-managed. My estimate of what I've seen from these plans and knowing how the plans will change during the course of the work, I estimate it's going to be around two years of work to complete this. It's also my strong belief that the construction will continue even past that as the Pearl's seems to, Pearl's seem to be planning to also redo the entire exterior of their house. The applicants piecemeal these past separate permits to remodel their house over the past two years, which was probably to avoid the sprinkler system. The house is currently well over sixty percent remodeled, and with the attic, it will make it basically a hundred percent remodel. I respectfully ask the town to consider the fire department's requirement of installing a sprinkler system due to the three-foot setback to protect our, our home from fire. Our second major point of concern and request is to consider not approving this permit due to the petitioner's non-compliance with the planning department. The applicants deceived us when they told us that they were building a koi pond, which was in fact a six-foot-deep heated pool. We submitted a letter to the planning commission about the pool pump hours and the two unsecured propane tanks. To gain approval from the unpermitted pool, the Pearls verbally agreed with the building department to a condition of reducing the hours of the pump and changing the hours that the pump would run. They also agreed to remove those propane tanks, which redeemed a fire hazard by the fire department. They, they did not reduce the pump hours and actually increased them from running two hours to running from nine to five daily. And neither did they remove the dangerous propane tanks. In fact, the fire department was deployed to come and remove those tanks. The, the third one is shorter. It's a ten-foot frontage fence that was deemed acceptable by the planning commission or the building department with the condition that vegetation would be maintained on, on the front of the fence. It's been two years, there's still no vegetation on there, even though they hire an English gardener to come there monthly. The planning department required the, the removal of the unpermitted deck, as, as has been talked about, and then extend, granted an extension for the delay of that removal. And the Pearls are now claiming that they will remove it after this latest project, but with their history of non-compliance, I'd really like to ask that the commission put all requests in writing as conditions of approval and to consider what would happen if these conditions are ignored or how they will be enforced. Another condition of approval that I'd like to ask for is protection of our family, if the project goes forward, from lead-based paint and toxic dust falling into our property. As well, I ask that contract, the contractors that are hired be prohibited from parking in front of our garage and parking space, and that the workers not have a radio on. In conclusion, most importantly, as we've said, as a minimum, we'd like you to not permit the southern dormer, which would be the greatest hardship on us. I, I really thank you for your time again, and I'd like to submit this into the file along with.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this item? Come up and state your name and address, and then three minutes.
Yes, my name is William Hughes. I live at three seven one Forest Avenue, which is about two or three houses down. I didn't realize such a small project was going to cause so much angst to people. And so I'm a little bit unprepared for that part of the presentation by my neighbors about health issues and stuff like that, which I'm really quite sorry to hear about. But my first point of view was simply that I had no objection to this dormer, which seems to be quite a small project. And in terms of the ongoing construction, it's my understanding that it was quite an old house to begin with, and I don't think you can expect people to live in a house that hasn't been fixed up for quite some time. And they have to make improvements to it, and it's unfortunate maybe if you're the next-door neighbor, but people have a property, and if they want to improve it, they have to have some leeway to do that. That's all I have to say. I don't have any comment on the south side dormer. I had a look at the plans, but I didn't notice that, that part, but from what I did see, it looks fine to me. And so I don't have really any objection to it, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Jay Hanson, three eighty-seven Forest Avenue. I live directly next door to the Pearls. As far as noise goes, I haven't heard any abnormal noise from that property. I hear noise throughout the valley construction. I hear chainsaws and blowers and skill saws and everything else. And as far as I'm concerned, I haven't heard anything abnormal. As far as the elevation of their dormers, their house is very high on the hill. Their almost complete house is above my house, so they, from anywhere on their property, they look down on my house, they look into my windows. I don't have a problem with it. If I don't want them looking in my windows, I'll close, close the drapes. As far as being in the backyard, I don't have any problem. I have neighbors on the other side that are friendly and, and look into my yard. I look into theirs, not a big deal. As far as construction trucks, the only construction people I've talked to have been very nice. They park where they can. There's, parking around that area is pretty hard, but everybody seems to have their spot, and if somebody parks in their spot on the road, they seem to get upset about it. And that's the way that some people are. My wife and I are in favor of this project. I think it will do the house well. We saw the house before they bought it, walked through the inside, and it was in pretty bad shape. It needed a lot of work. It had deferred maintenance for many, many years. The coolers just didn't spend a lot of time working on that house. And I'm, I'm glad to see them bringing the house back up to where it should be instead of demolishing it and turning it into a duplex. You know, we have too many duplexes in the neighborhood as it is. So I'm in favor of this project, and I hope that you will see my side of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this item before we bring it back?
My name's Larry Steiner, and I live at twenty-five Forest Terrace, and my wife and I have been there for thirty-five years. We've met the neighbors. I haven't had the same experience. I don't live right next door, but again, we haven't heard a lot of the noise because we're down the block a little bit, but I know the contractors at first would park in front of our, well, our house, not our space, but that's usually where we park. But I had a different reaction than Davis had. I went down and, and talked to Julian and Martha, and they said that they would tell the contractors not to park their, park down below, and we didn't have any problem after that situation. I don't know anything about dormers or facing, but I do know that their house is very high on the other side of the street, and they do have that long lot, which is on Forest and Forest Terrace. So I can't speak to that, but my sympathies to the next-door neighbors who are having health problems. But I just want to say that I've had a pretty good relationship for the short period of time with both Martha and Julian. Thank you.
Anyone else? And then we'll bring it back up here. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and bring it back up to the commission for And/or any other questions? Can you tell me what date the first permit was pulled on this? Do you know when the first project was started?
No, I didn't keep track of all that stuff. That's in the building file, back in the building department. I could go and get it.
So we've got privacy issues, we've got noise issues, we've got parking issues that have been brought up by the public. Those were the, and then we've got the, you know, the issue of repetitive projects one after the other, and finishing up one and non-compliance and those kinds of things. Those are the kind of the issues that I had noted before and wrote down again. I don't know if there's any other issues out there that other folks wrote down.
I guess I would be, and I, I know, I remember the pool and the, the noise from that and the propane tanks, and two things. One is, I think when we made the adjustments, we weren't aware of the neighbor living to being at home the entire day. And so I think we looked at that project and may have come up with a time for those pumps to run that was during the daytime hours, thinking that that would reduce the impact, and it may not have. So I think, but I guess I would be curious from staff if, if there are any issues with that last permit, if it's been met, if there's any outstanding steps.
Well, the problem with, the problem with the pumps is that we don't believe they violate the noise ordinance. I mean, they can be annoying, but they don't rise to the level of violating the noise ordinance. So you can certainly ask the applicant and try to, and put conditions to try to further limit the running of the pumps.
I mean, I don't, I don't have enough information right now. I just, I couldn't, I know we, we actually discussed the time of operation.
Well, when I went back through the file, you talked about it, but it wasn't actually made a condition of approval because the applicant indicated that he was going to limit the running of the pumps. So I think it didn't get included in the actual motion.
As a condition.
Right.
Okay. But in terms of the rest of that application, it's been complied with, it's been signed off, or is that one still pending as well?
It's been signed off.
What about the vegetation plan that was brought up? Was there any bond on that, or, or how do you do compliance with the fence? And there was a comment about a fence that was supposed to have vegetation and screening, and there's never been anything done. Do you, do you record?
Oh, that, that was, that was a project where they actually started to build the fence, and they were not in compliance. It was right on top of the retaining wall on Forest. And it was, it never came to you because what they did is they moved the fence back from the top of the retaining wall. It's a six-foot fence. We, we suggested that they plant it, but it didn't come to you for any kind of an exception. It would definitely look better if the vegetation was thriving to, you know, screen the fence, but it wasn't a condition after a public hearing.
And so then the other question I have, this isn't a design review issue, but some of the things that were brought up sounded like design review issues, and I don't know, maybe it's more of a question for architects, if we did hear comments about one, one side not being done, and I don't know if that's simple, or is that a big deal in terms of design, or how we need, how we would consider that if that were something that we were thinking about. The application is for both dormers, north and south.
Yeah, if, if, you know, if it's a privacy issue, it's a bathroom on that side, they can put clear story windows in, they can put, you know, opaque windows, but you could, if you felt strongly enough about it, continue it and ask them to come back with some kind of an alternative design. I don't think it would work to just take the dormer off one side, but I would. I don't think it would work to just take the dormer off one side, but I would ask the architect. I'm not sure that would look right.
During the public testimony, I've been perusing the plans a little clearer here. It seems like it could be possible to maybe pull the dormer back. I had concerns when I visited the site there that it may be, you know, close to that side of the property. So that's one suggestion. And also, it does look like, because it is bathroom and a dressing area, there can be, you know, clear story windows or skylights or some other type of window. It doesn't need to be an egress window that would be required in the living areas to meet fire access in those rooms. So there would be, there would be the possibility that they could adjust the windows in that area. And I also would want to know if it's possible, from the building side, to put a limit on the building permit. Is it possible to put a limit of six months on a permit?
We don't have a definitive legal answer for you right now on that. So if you wanted to get one, we could go get a definitive answer for you. You could qualify the condition that if allowed legally, that we would put a cap on the time of construction.
So we don't have any, we don't have any time limits on any construction currently?
No, and as you've noted, this has come up in the past. There's a push in the other direction for permits once they've been issued before construction begins during the down period. People wanted to extend the one year before construction began, but that's kind of falling by the wayside as the economy recovers. But no, and we did discuss this at the council level, and the attorney, town attorney did chime in at that time, that a more appropriate way to go would be the change to town code with regards to the construction period carte blanche rather than on a piece-by-piece project basis. But we're open to adding that with the caveat that assuming it's legally possible to put the cap on the construction time, and then we can do our homework with legal counsel.
Okay. Well, I think, I don't know, I think it could be appropriate to, as part of our conditions, kind of give like an estimate of how long construction could last. I mean, if it's a new house, obviously, six months is probably not enough time. But for an addition project like this, I think that seems reasonable. And it might be something that we want to look at, if there's a way that we can incorporate in the conditions.
Right. Presumably, you do that from the time that the permits were pulled.
So another question I have, and Commissioner Caroline brought it up a little bit. You know, the eaves hang over to three feet, and so the side yard setback is already impeded upon. But this new construction, it looks like, is coming within five feet. So while it's one, it's new construction, even though the old structure is there, is there any consideration of that?
No, the new...
Impeding on the new? Go ahead.
The new construction, we noted to them that if they went out to the edge of the existing house, they would need a setback variant. So they pulled it back so that it meets the code.
So it's at five feet.
Right.
Okay, so if it was farther, it would be considered going into the side setback?
Yeah, if it projected out further towards the property line, it would be in the setback.
Got it. Thank you.
And is it the same distance out on the house as the existing two dormers? Or is it further in? And Commissioner Caroline, you might, when you were looking at the dormers and like talking about them pulling them back in, did you notice are the new dormers kind of in the same distance out as the existing dormers? Are they farther? Because it looks, you know, when you look at the new, the existing dormers...
They're flush with the wall face, the exterior wall face.
The new ones and the, the new ones, proposed new ones and the existing?
So the existing are flush with the wall face, the proposed ones are setback.
Setback farther.
A little bit, a foot or so back.
It looks like on the south side, they pulled it back in order to meet setback. And on the opposite side, it aligns, I think, with the edge. I mean, for construction purposes, it's much simpler to align it with the exterior walls. Pulling it back would require, you know, more engineering to be involved.
So the existings are flush with the existing wall face, and the proposed ones are pulled back?
Another clarification, all of the construction, as far as you know, of prior stuff is done and over. There's not any, there's no overlapping...
That's what the building official told me today.
Okay.
And is something like the design change, I could see design changes like moving walls and things like that being something that would be probably more appropriate for continuation? Are different windows like clear story or something like that versus current windows, is that something that can be made as a condition?
You've included that as conditions of approval and not had people come back.
If you recall in Francis Kibbe 62 Valley with the living room, which we finally had final resolution on about two weeks ago after it got framed in, and I would, well, I think for ventilation purposes, you might consider the frosting alternative. Although you could open the tops, too.
I personally think that's a workable solution to the privacy issue. It is a bathroom, so people aren't going to be sitting in there, hopefully right at the window. And if it is either frosted or clear storied, that somewhat addressed, you know, that addresses some of the privacy concerns in terms of looking out over, because you wouldn't be able to then look out over if it's frosted or clear storied. So I would be certainly in favor of that. Do we have provisions in the conditions with respect to construction on a property and debris and dust flying and the requirement of the property owner who's doing the construction to remediate or limit in some way their kind of construction flow of dust and debris and stuff onto other people's property?
Yeah, there's a standard condition. They're supposed to, you know, keep the dust down.
One other question about conditions and this issue of serial remodeling. And this is something I somewhat struggle with because as a property owner, you might not have the money to be able to do it all at once and to deprive a property owner of the ability to remodel their house repeatedly as their family grows, or they, you know, acquire more capital to be able to do things that they couldn't do in the first place. I can certainly understand that. And at the same time, I can also understand not wanting to have just ongoing construction at a property. And then this issue of the cumulative strategy, which I think has been leveraged in the past. I have no idea about this particular one of if they're separate segmented issues, then you're not coming for the planning commission for five variances, it's just one at a time, bite-sized variances. Does staff have any suggestions or thoughts on how to deal with those kinds of, how to both allow people to do ongoing work if they want to and yet not allow excessive use of that?
We try to watch for that end run, and this one, this one is...
We can't really do anything about it.
Yeah, we really can't do anything about the end run unless you wanted to adjust the code, and that would be looking forward. So that would be all we have to say on it. But there is an accumulative issue as far as sprinklers are concerned within a certain window of time, but that's not been, that's not been touched here.
And that timeframe is a permit timeframe or a construction timeframe with the fire department?
It's a time, it's, they add the permits together if they occur within the same year. So if you get a permit and you final it, and then you apply for another permit, you get out of, you know, it's not added together towards your 50% by the fire department. What the fire department's telling me about this property is that Forest Terrace is so narrow that that's not even really the issue. They want a site plan, and they want, they want to be shown that they can somehow meet access regulations, that the fire department can get a hose to within 150 feet of all portions of all structures on their property. If they can't show that, then the alternative to try to keep the house safe is to sprinkler it whether you're adding on or not at this point. If you were adding two square feet, they're telling me, based on the WUI code, if you can't get the access, then they can require you to put the sprinklers in if you're just adding two square feet. So that's going to be the real issue here. And the fire, the building official explained to me that there are a number of ways to comply with that. They could put in a fire hydrant that, you know, closer that might help meet that. But that's why you guys, in your wisdom, included that condition, that other agencies' conditions can be changed by that agency in writing to the planning and building department. So we don't really have to deal with that here.
So, but to summarize that, that's still something that's being looked at by Ross Valley Fire Department.
Yes.
And they have yet to make a determination.
Right.
So it's possible that there could be a requirement for sprinklers and a period of construction for that. It's possible that there'd be a requirement for a fire hydrant.
Yeah, they have to show, they have to show how they're going to meet the access, access requirements for the fire department. And if they can't do that, the fire department at the building permit stage, even if they didn't require any discretionary permits, could say you need to put sprinklers in.
And is length of construction time a consideration that we are allowed to use in deliberating our decision? Or is that something that you can use as a finding of denial for application?
What the town attorney said at the council meeting is, what I got from what she said is that she's much more comfortable if the town's going to do something like that, that it do it the way Tiburon, I think, is. They put it in their code that you have to complete construction within a certain amount of time, and it's blanket for all construction projects.
I think the question was actually...
She said she would look at...
I think it was a different question, wasn't it?
Well, she's asking if she can use that as a finding for denying a project. And I've never, your findings are supposed to be based on something in the land that makes it, you know, that makes the project, you know, you can't do it. And length of construction time doesn't really fit into that.
That it was a land, that our considerations of findings are land use findings, shape, size, slope, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, now, if, if either part, if either the neighbors or the applicants aren't happy with whatever decision you make, they have a right to appeal it to the council, and the council has more leeway than you do. They can make decisions based on hardship determinations. So that's something that could be considered going forward if people aren't happy with what happens here tonight.
One more question on that. If we've been revising noise ordinance and noise conditions, and we have things currently in place, if construction on any project is taking place in violation of the noise ordinance besides neighbors calling police to have them come and investigate the situation, are there things that can be done at this process to ensure that those noise ordinance conditions are being adhered to during the construction phase?
They're implied, they're implied.
And if there's a repeat violation, do you stop project? Like if you have a construction person who's just violating the noise ordinance, then what's the action, what's the...
It depends on circumstances. If you remember on the Good Earth, we wanted to get the project done, and we said if we got three independent complaints within one week, that we'd draw them back to a earlier cutoff time on the construction.
Our interview, 20 questions over. We haven't shot this many questions at you guys for a long time. You know, I have a lot of angst over this, and part of the reason I have angst is because we've, we've seen this property come to us a number of times, and I think we, at least I've felt very trying to work with and workable. And tonight, I think part of noticing and the importance of our getting notices out is that neighbors from day one can understand. And I think what's happened or what I'm observing is there's been a cumulative effect that is, we're seeing tonight, that had some of these concerns been raised the first time this property was brought forward, it very well could have, the same work might have been done, but the outcome, it might have been much different. So I think as, I'm hearing the concern from the neighbors, and I put a lot of weight on that because I, I am worried that this is an ongoing thing. And we've seen a number of applications, and I didn't hear that this is the last one we're going to see. So that's my personal perspective. That said, I do feel like I'd be open to design modifications that could accommodate some of these things because I think we have to balance, balance this. But, you know, there's two very different sides and two very different stories, and I think people are affected differently, and they're at home at different times and, you know, might not be bothered by it. Most of the time, I'm not home when most construction's going on, but if I am one day, then I notice it, you know? So those are just kind of my own observations. So I would be, I'd be comfortable with, I don't think I've heard anything about redesign that we probably couldn't address tonight, but I'd be open to continuance. Definitely if dormers were to happen on the south, modification of the windows. But I think the bigger consideration on that is the duration of the work. Cutting into the roof is, it's not a short, quick, we'll get it done in a week kind of a thing. It's a substantial amount of work. It's probably re-roofing and all kinds of stuff. And I think I'm sensitive to that. And I'm just a little bit curious, and I think it's just an unfortunate aggradiation of frustration that we're hearing two very different stories of deep frustration and perfect satisfaction from neighbors. And every neighborhood has those issues. And it's just unfortunate. And I think, again, if the first time we saw this in 2011, if we'd have heard all these concerns, it might have gone a little bit different way, so.
You know, I sympathize with neighbors in hearing the construction noise and the construction hassles. I'm actually somebody who does work at home 80% of the time when I'm not at my university. So having the peace and quiet and not having constant construction, Chairperson Hamilton's concerns about as family situations change and living needs change and aging parents or young kids or empty nesters all change your needs of using your house or buying these older houses and trying to update them is a concern. You know, I get the impression as well from the community that this might be a property where there's maybe been more construction and more noise than is typical in the area. So yeah, it's a challenging thing to balance and where we can put in parameters that we already have in place in the town code to make it as least of an impact on the community and minimize those negative externalities. We really need to try to do that.
Is there a way for us to approve it? You had mentioned something like with a condition pending legal approval, like a timeline condition pending legal approval.
The way a Causa was just, you put a time limit with the caveat, assuming this is legally possible.
And you can't do anything like, and if it's not legally possible, then we want to, we want to... to, we want to...
No.
Continue it? We can't say otherwise? No.
Because I, I think if, to me, if that's the rationale for yes or no, it, you can't assume that it would be the case because we don't have that legal interpretation.
And if you need that information before you can go forward, you have the ability to continue it.
Also, you could ask the applicant if he has an estimate on when the, how long the construction might take, and then dovetail your condition of time with his timeframe so that everybody's on the same page with an understanding of how long this project is expected to take place so that going forward, we're sort of coming from a position of agreement on how long it should take. Just an idea. You, you could ask the applicant what he, how long he thinks it would take. I'm just saying to inform yourselves of what he thinks it would take.
Applicant, how long do you think it would take?
Applicant, within a six-month timeline, which I think is probably aggressive, probably a seven-month. I am, you don't have to go and speak to an attorney. I am very happy with you guys setting a condition for completion. I mean, I saw what happened to Sarah Winchester, so I don't want to end up like that. I want to have an end to this so that we can, you know, have the contractors move on. So please, good suggestion.
Thank you. One other question I had about this issue of non-compliance and, you know, an applicant who says, "Oh, even though it was verbal..." We asked you a couple of questions about things that were not conditions of approval, like the pumps and the propane and the vegetation or whatever, a lot of verbal stuff. Removal of the deck, I am, I am concerned that it gets completed and it gets wrapped up and everything that they're supposed to do gets done. Could, could there be a bond provision for removal of the decks to ensure that that happens?
Yes, you could add that.
Is there, which condition, is that condition number five? Supposed to be removed prior to the project. Is that where we would put the bond? And what would you suggest that be?
What we usually have, you, you say that they bring, bring in contractors' estimates for the cost of removing the deck, and then the bond is made in that amount. And we usually say bond or letter of credit or cash deposit. They can do whichever form they would like.
So bond, letter, credit, or cash deposit equivalent to the cost of removal?
Removal, based, based on a, a estimate from a contractor. And of course, if our building official looks at the estimate and it seems, you know, unreasonable, we'll ask them to give us another one.
So based on an estimate from a contractor and pending the approval of the building official? Okay. Yeah?
Yeah, we have an estimate on, and I can divide it, it's $2,700.
Great, you're ahead of the game. So if we put that provision in...
I'll run you it.
Okay. So that's, that is a condition that I think would be a good thing to have in there, just to kind of wrap up, making sure that that happens. We talked about adding the condition of...
I would leave the amount out and just say verified by the building.
We talked about adding the condition of clear story or frosted windows. Commissioner Caroline, do you have a suggestion for what that would be?
Well, I think maybe we can put language such as privacy glass or something, so we could leave it at the discretion of the applicant to how he, they would like to fulfill that. But those options would be acceptable.
I, I guess the question I have, if a window's three by five, you know, the, the sliding window in a bathroom, why frosted glass? I, I see clear story, or even if it's swinging out, it doesn't, it, it's still opening, and it's still creating that. It's a visual difference, but it's also, you can open the window, and you still have a big gaping, you're, you're not maintaining or protecting privacy. So I guess that's where I feel like the, the size or the scale of the window is, is, at least to me, an issue.
Is the use of the term clear story clear enough that means above, above sideline?
Clear story or transom windows, acceptable term?
And is there a condition that that would go in, or would that be an additional condition?
Just add it as an additional condition, I think.
Are there any other conditions or provisions or issues?
Well, I think we've talked about it, and, and I'm going to suggest some conditions, but I'm also going to say that I don't feel comfortable with the project as, as it is. But I think I want to at least identify some. Whether I vote for it or not, I don't know. But I think the, the, what we've heard from the applicant is, I, I feel like we, based on what we've heard from the applicant, I think we can make a condition that's tied to a six-month construction period and reference the applicant's agreement on that, which it seems like that would give the town some, some coverage. And not make it a conditional thing, just, just make it, you know, based on the agreement of the applicant, the construction period will be no more than six months. Yeah.
Do you want to say a little bit about what else you're feeling in terms of not wanting to approve it, or are you thinking of continuing it?
Well, I, I do, I'm, I, I think what I'm thinking about is the, the work on the south side is having a direct, and a direct effect on the neighbor. And, and I think that not, even clear story, you're still working on that side. You're still having an effect that you might be addressing the privacy, but you're still having this period of work that's in, three feet away from the property line essentially. So that's, that's the concern that I have. On the north side, the neighbor has no concerns and is open. So I mean, to, to me, that, that's not a big deal on the north side, but then you kind of set up a weird looking three dormers and, and one that's not. But again, I think, you know, that's, so it's more than just privacy is, is my concern.
So your concern is the process of constructing it, not what's necessarily, what's constructed at the end of that process?
I, I mean, I think the clear story would be one accommodation that would accommodate the privacy, but it doesn't necessarily address the, the breadth of the concerns that have been raised.
Other commissioners? In terms of other conditions, whether these conditions satisfy your interest in approving, or are there other things or denial on other reasons?
Is it possible to get feedback from the duplex neighbors? South side?
I, I guess the, they, they made it clear they don't want it, but if they're going to have it, they don't want the south dormer. And if, you know, I mean, I think they're, they're very clear and, and recognize that, you know, if there aren't going to be, if it's not a denial to at least identify some conditions that would help address some of the concerns that they have. They also identified protection from dust. And, you know, we had that question about the, the, yes, no dust, but sort of what's the remedy? How, is it a complaint to the building official?
Yeah, they complain to the building official. You know, if, if it's a real dirty site, you know, they often dampen the soil, but if they're really...
But if it's coming out of a third story?
Yeah, they would have to call the building official.
There's no soil issue. It's, it's coming right out of the...
Right, it's dust from the construction. I don't, I'm not sure how you would stop that, but...
I mean, you could put plastic or something like that over the...
You could screen it somehow.
Over that area. Prohibition from parking, more than just respecting parking areas. And then this, the, the other thing about the radio, I mean, those are, those were issues that were identified during the, you know, if, if the work's going on, at least having some conditions that recognize those concerns.
You had mentioned that we don't have as much discretion with respect to hardship, and I'm assuming that that means kind of the particular situation of people who are in the space now and their living conditions and those kinds of things, like, like we talked about before, it's land use issues that we're constrained by looking at. And I know this has come up in the past with other applicants in terms of thinking long term. It's not just this family in this house right now, it's the house and the land, because it could be another family in two, five, 10 years. It could be different neighbors in three or five years. And so I'm assuming that's why we're limited to kind of land use findings and provisions. But you said that the town council has more latitude on appeals to address the particulars of the current living conditions of who's in there. Is that my, is that a correct note?
They, they get advice from their attorney, but I have seen them make decisions based on advice from their attorney that allow exceptions based on hardship. So...
Which is different from what they...
I can give you an example. There was a family that suffered some really severe health issues, and they granted exceptions to allow a second unit for a nurse to live in while the, the family was going through that situation, even though it didn't necessarily meet the requirements of the second unit ordinance. That's one example that I can just think of right off the top of my head.
And I would hope that the attorney's consideration of a time limit on construction might also incorporate current health issues of neighbors. I don't know if they can, but again, being a unique circumstance for, I understand that they want to do a blanket thing, but for now, whether or not they could look at this particular circumstance and this particular timeline, given the particular makeup of the...
We're passed out on this one because we have, I think Brandon articulated, we have agreement with the applicant, and we, so we just do the language cart launch. I mean, excuse me, just, it's definitive that construction will be allowed for six months after the building permit is issued. But I think you're right, that the issue is not going to go away overall, so your comments will be well taken.
Yeah, and I just want to say one more thing, and I, I think it gets at that piecemealing thing, and we've had these a few times. If this came to us, all of the things aggregate that have happened over the last three years, I think if this came to us as one project, one proposal, it wouldn't be an issue to approve it. I don't, I don't see anything holding us back from approving that. The reason I'm concerned now is that it's come to us in little pieces, and there's an aggregate effect, accumulative effect, that was not known or understood at the beginning. So that's really kind of where, where my concern is. And I, I would say, and I think we've, you've articulated, but I think a rationale for clear story or transom window in a bathroom is certainly a reasonable. If that's the use of that space, then that's a reasonable modification, you know, based on the use of that little area.
So what I have as far as amendments to the conditions are an amendment to condition number five, which is to add a bond or letter of credit or deposit equal to the cost of removal based on an estimate from a contractor and pending approval of the building, building official. So that's in addition to number five. An addition of a number seven condition, which would be that the windows on the south-facing dormer be a clear story or transom in nature. And then a condition number eight, which would be to limit the time of construction to no more than six months per the applicant's agreement to do so. Those are the three conditions that I heard, which I think would remediate. It doesn't, it doesn't deal with the parking, and it doesn't deal with the radio, and it doesn't deal with rude contractors.
But I, I do, I, I do think that, you know, you've, I think you've explained it well, that short-term effects, but, but issuing the, the permit also can consider the, I mean, we say when the construction deliveries can occur, we say that if you damage the road, you have to fix it. And I think it's very reasonable to say you'll have to use additional mitigation measures associated with any work on the south side to reduce the potential for dust and other debris to affect the, the property to the south. And I think it is reasonable to say that, and maybe it's in the, it's, we have standard conditions about noise and, and work periods. I'm not finding them right now. Usually we have a much longer list related to the, to the construction deliveries and all of those kinds of things, and I'm not seeing them here. But, but that's sort of what that, like the radio and things like that could be brought into.
Yeah, you can add anything you want. This, this was the one, the long list you're thinking of is usually when they're doing foundations and excavation and things, which this project wasn't going to include. So it includes all this stuff about the structural engineer inspecting the forms and everything. But, but if you see something missing, you can definitely add it in.
Because that's a condition of the actual work going on, and it's, it is about the neighbors and the neighborhood at that time, and it's not preventing future use.
So what I'm hearing is adding a ninth condition that says that the applicant shall use additional mitigation measures to protect the south-side neighbor from construction-related dust and debris?
And could you, I would recommend you say to the satisfaction of the building official so that, that tags him as the authority?
So south-side neighbor, wait, to protect the south-side neighbor from construction-related...
Airborne particulate.
Okay. Airborne particulates to the satisfaction of the building official. Okay?
During construction.
Okay. So that would say that the applicant shall use additional mitigation measures to protect the south-side neighbor from construction-related airborne particulate matter to the satisfaction of the building official during construction. Okay? Particulates, all right. Anything else? And again, I would reiterate, calling the police if people are parking in your driveway and doing things that's worthy of calling the police on. Did you want to say something?
Yes, if you'd like to add an additional condition regarding no radios or the, you know, the contract, that we provide an immediate notice as a part of our contract.
Could, could...
Oh, sorry. If you'd like to add an additional condition saying no music, we'd be happy to have that as a condition. Also, if you'd like to say that, you know, that once we're provided notice of one of the contractors parking in someone's spot, that we'll be given, whatever it is, 24 hours to remedy it, and they get like three strikes or something. I mean, I'm, I'm very comfortable with any of those type of things. I'm disturbed here that our contractors were not acting neighborly.
Thank you. Would you like to add something like that? Anyone?
I think it was well said.
Yes, number 10.
Condition 10.
Condition number 10.
That, yeah, that, yeah. Construction, you know, radios and other, non-construction-related noises will, will not be permitted during the construction. And another condition it sounded like would be, I don't know how you would want to word that with, because it's going to go to the building official or...
The parking lot.
Yeah. Notify, if the building or if the town is notified, the applicant has 24 hours to...
I just see a bit of a problem with that one because...
Because it's an immediate issue.
And in that Forest Avenue neighborhood, we have these pullouts that aren't really people's legal right to claim as their own, and it almost sounds, I mean, the gentleman whose driveway is being blocked, that's clearly the police will come out and make someone move if you can't get onto your own private parking. But these pullouts, they're not really private parking.
I, I, and, and I agree. I think the, the big thing was...
So I don't think the police would enforce it.
If somebody parks in front of you, if you get double parked in, and you have to actually call and wait, that's the inconvenience. The fact that they don't get cited, yeah, of course, the police aren't going to give them a ticket, but it's the inconvenience of that 15 minutes for the response. And it's a waste of the town's police staff to have to come out here and tell somebody to move. So it's inconsiderate and inappropriate, but I don't, yeah, I don't know if there's a condition that we could make that makes sense.
And hopefully, through this process, that the contract, you know, that you're aware of this now will also aid in remediating some of that issue.
The only thing I can see is that it actually might help the applicant... The only thing I can see is that it actually might help the applicant be able to tell his contractor to follow the rule because it's part of the condition. I mean, that's the only, that's the value that I actually see out of it, but.
Do you just want a condition of contractors will, will ensure that they abide by parking regulations and? The commission has on another project, a new house up on Ridge, you did require that the, um, the contractors park most of the vehicles down by that little triangular park on, on Cascade and just try to bring one or two vehicles to the site. So, I mean, you've done it in the past. You could put in a condition that requires carpooling to the site.
That's what the contractors would.
Which might help.
I don't know if we prescribe where to park, but would limit, limit worker. Construction vehicles or something like that. Is there a place that you'd suggest that they have to park? We don't really have a town loading and unloading area anymore. It used to be Good Earth.
I don't know, that little, that little park on Cascade, there's, there's public parking all the way around it. It's across, it's not in front of anyone's houses. Um, it does get used by other, other projects. So, um, you know, we can't give them first preference because it's public parking, but it's just they can use public parking in an area where it's available and where it's not so, it's such a premium like Forest Ave, Forest Avenue and Forest Terrace.
I think I, yeah, a condition to, to limit, to consolidate most construction worker vehicles in a public parking area and limit the number of construction vehicles.
Two?
I don't know, because it could be three. I don't know. To, to not exceed the, the available parking on Forest Terrace.
May, may I make a suggestion?
Please.
Um, in other cities, as part of the building permit process, we've had to provide something similar, like a construction management plan where you outline how you will handle deliveries, handle parking and things like that at the site, and then, um, be up to the building official to approve or make modifications.
We've got the, the, the building, we have these provisions, they're conditions of approval. If any of the conditions are violated, that impinges on the ability of a project to go forward. So I think the idea of having, having the applicant submit a construction plan makes a lot of sense to deal with deliveries, parking, those kinds of things. And then it becomes, now, if they, they submit a plan, just like asking them for a vegetation plan, does it become part of what they have to comply with?
I think I heard you say a construction management plan.
Right.
Yeah, normally it's a written, it can be just a written document that's submitted as part of the, the plans and the other documents for the permit.
And you could stipulate a, a plan that will minimali, minimize parking requirements for the project and controlled delivery hours, something like that.
And, and when they submit that plan and it's approved by the building official, then it becomes a enforceable plan. That's enforceable.
They have to abide by it.
And if they, they have to abide by it, otherwise they get a condition of a building, right? And if they don't abide by it, then they, then the project can get tagged or whatever if they're violating any of these conditions cited.
A citation could be issued.
So they issue citations if they're not in compliance with their conditions. Right. So what I took from what you both just said was number 11. Provide a construction management plan to minimize parking impact and parking and delivery impact on the neighborhood, subject to approval by the building official. Okay. Does that work for you? Okay, so I think that covers all of them. I'm just going to go back and read what these conditions are, hopefully just once and not have to read them again if we have a, a motion. Um, so amendment to condition number five is to add a bond, a letter of credit or a deposit equal to the cost of removal of the deck based on an estimate from a contractor and pending approval by the building official. Number, at addition of number seven, south side dormer shall have clear story or transom windows. Number eight, there will be a, uh, constructions shall be limited to no more than six months per the applicant's agreement to do so.
From issuance of building permit.
Say this again?
From issuance of the building permit.
Six months from issuance of the building permit. Okay. So the, the project shall be limited to no more than six months from issuance of the building permit.
Construction for six months from issuance of the building permit.
Project, project construction shall be limited to no more than six months from issue of the building permit, as per the applicant's agreement to do so. Number nine would be that the applicant shall use additional mitigation measures to protect the south side neighbor from construction-related airborne particulates as, and per the satisfaction of the building official during construction.
To, to the satisfaction.
To the satisfaction of the building official during construction. Number 10 would be, be that, uh, radio noise and other non-construction noises shall not be permitted during construction. And 11 is that the applicant will provide a construction management plan to minimize parking and delivery impacts on the neighborhood, subject to approval by the building official. So I think that covers the scope. And unless there's anything else to be added, we can now hopefully maybe take an action.
I'm ready to make a motion to, um, approve the projects per the amended conditions.
Second the motion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
A respectful no.
Okay, well, the application with all of the additional conditions, um, was approved. There is a 10-day appeal period with a fee, $500 fee, um, to the town council. So, thank you all for being here. All right, let us continue on our meeting. Thank you, home audience, for staying up so late and staying with us. The, the end will be very entertaining. So for all of our kids who are still awake watching us, hi. Go to bed. Okay, sorry, I diverge. Staff would like to go to bed as well. So we are now on minutes from the, and I'm yelling. We are now doing our minutes for the July 18th meeting. Um, and all four of the, no, so there's three of them and I have to recuse myself because I wasn't, well, I can't vote because I wasn't here. So does that, that would be okay? They can approve it? Okay. Quorum of the present. Are there any changes or amendments to it?
I'd move to approve the minutes from July 18th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstain, myself, I wasn't here. All right, on to planning director's report.
Okay, as you all know, we have a joint meeting in this room between the Affordable Housing Committee, the G-PIC, the General Plan Implementation Committee, and you commissioners, the planning commission, it's a three-way joint meeting in this room on August 27th at 7:00 in the evening to consider, discuss, consider, and hopefully approve the recommended amendments to 2010 Town of Fairfax housing element that staff's been working very hard on with our prime consultant and a sub-consultant that's very tied in with the State Department of Housing and Community Development that has been shadowing our work. So we're very excited to be at this point. We're on a tight timeline to get you all, um, your opinion and hopefully approval on the narrative amendments to the housing element. Assuming that you all are happy with the amendments, or we can wordsmith them to a point where you're all happy, they'll go up to the state, they have 60 days to turn it around and give us a conditional approval. And then we take it to council on November, in the first Wednesday of November. Presumably council will hopefully bless it. And then it goes back up to the state for the final certification within 90 days. That's going to be a tight turnaround. We're going to be breathing down Housing and Community Development's neck because we actually have to have a certified housing element, time certain by January 31st of 2014, or we lose the $300,000 in O-Beg grants to improve the circulation in and around the parquet. So we're on a tight timeline. We're excited because we were able to address all 11 pages of the state's concerns, um, by going through it with a fine-tooth comb. And if you remember, one of the biggest surprises was that we not only were being held to the most recent planning period, but the prior planning period. So we had to adopt or adapt our strategy to include 64 units in addition to the 108, and we've done that. So I'm really looking forward to rolling that out for you all. In addition to having, uh, the final stretch going on with the housing element, um, in this room on September 4th at the next town council meeting, I'm happy to report that the committee, the countywide committee that I currently have the honor of chairing, the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, will be giving a short 15-minute presentation, going to try and make it 10, but it seems to creep over to 15 minutes with questions, on our recent greenhouse gas inventory update. There was a 2005 greenhouse update, inventory that took place, and now we are completing the 2010 greenhouse gas inventory for government operations. That'll be happening at the next council meeting. I also mentioned to you that it'd be the first reading on the proposed amendments to the noise ordinance, reducing the hours of construction during the weekdays from 8:00 to 8:00, to 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. and on the week, weekends and holidays from 9:00 to 6:00 on the weekend to 9:00 to 4:00 on the weekends and holidays. In October, we hope to be finishing up in G-PIC, the Climate Action Plan, um, which is another very significant document that's mandated in the general plan that we'll be discussing further in a minute. Um, so that's being accomplished with an ad hoc subcommittee of the G-PIC that's acting as the Fairfax Climate Action Committee, which was part of the new bylaws for G-PIC. We said that the F-CAC would be a ad hoc subcommittee under the G-PIC and not a voting member, but an ad hoc subcommittee under the direction of G-PIC. Um, and I just mentioned, we'll be coming back in November to council with presumably the, um, conditionally approved, uh, housing elements. So we have a lot going on. We're also, um, starting to work with our consultants on the forward planning for the town center plan process, which will occur after the beginning of the year. So we'll be doing some forward planning and some background analysis, um, in the fall on that also. I'm happy to, to report that we have, um, we have to sign a memorandum of understanding yet, but it looks like we're going to have another intern starting who's homegrown, he's local. In fact, he's Mark Bell's son, Corwin Bell, just graduated from Berkeley's undergraduate program with a minor in planning and intends to apply to graduate school at the end of the year, beginning of next year for the following fall semester 2014. So we'll have Corwin in, Corwin on, um, four days, four hours, four days a week, and he will actually be receiving a stipend from the town, from our department's budget. And let's see, I think that's about it. If that's not enough, there's a lot going on. Thank you.
You're re-energized, I can tell. Um, so on the consent calendar, we have the, the gas station excavation. Will there be, and it said that it was going to be a proposed new station. So will that come to us, or is that something?
Yes, yes. They needed, because of the amount of, uh, excavation going on, they needed the excavation permit to, to happen. And there's just some wrinkles that are being ironed out with, um, the traffic impact analysis that's going on and some of the site considerations that rippled out of that traffic impact analysis. A, a council person in Bregman requested that they look into the access off of Broadway, and they're actually adding a curb cut on that side. We verified where the town's easement was, and the good news is, it's looking like the operation of that gas station can occur at the same time in the future that the town would, um, be interested in. If they, if the town decides to take that easement for continuing Bang Street through to Sir Francis Drake in the future, they can live copacetically together. And finally, the last little wrinkle that's being worked out is that the idea of a sidewalk on the Broadway side of the property is really difficult to fit in there, so they've done what they can. But, um, without major surgery involving a lot of the area, not even involved with their project, um, that's going to be difficult to accomplish. But, so it will be coming into you, and there's been a lot of due diligence on behalf of the applicant to get together, um, all the requirements necessary to have a complete application, particularly with regards to the traffic impact study.
And I'm just going to ask it because it was written in the application. Is there a formula business issue with gas stations?
Yes, and, um, we have been working with them because it isn't that there's a complete restriction on formula business. You have to do things to make it palatable. Having, and as you're aware, that this property was rezoned, um, as a result of the final adoption of the general plan in April of last year, it was rezoned from highway commercial to central commercial. There was no restriction in highway commercial and formula business. There is a restriction on formula business in the central commercial. So we're working with them and enticing them to help us get beyond the formula business image, if you will. Um, having said that, we're also aware that it's not a very pretty site to look at right now. It's been a gas station, um, in the past. There's also some issues that we're getting educated on in terms of independent gas stations versus chain gas stations, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll be coming back to you shortly with that entitlements application. And there's one other thing I, I forgot to mention. Um, I usually say this at the council meetings every month also, is that we continue to work with the neighborhoods and the management of the Good Earth on mitigation measures to the truck noise in early morning. If you recall, the approach coming out of the last sit-down we had was, you know, compliance. These were the agreements. Let's make sure that we stay to the agreement. And then improvement on those agreements, and if they were, if they, they can achieve those improvements to the satisfaction of neighborhood, then reward with lifting the restriction after 6:00 for the number of trucks. So, um, we have another sit-down scheduled on August 29th. That'll be in town hall between the main representatives of the neighbor and the two principal partners of, of the Good Earth. And, um, so we're making progress and we will be reporting back to you all in October. That'll be the six-month period you instructed us to work with them, try to mitigate these issues and come to resolutions. And so we're, we're aware, the timing, we sort of had two-month intervals between the initial meeting and now this meeting, and then when we come back to you. So things are, um, moving in, I optimistically say, a positive direction.
You mentioned the traffic impact study. What's the precipitating need for that? What, there is a traffic impact study and it's just being done as part of what?
That was for the 2001, the gas station project.
Gas station.
It triggered, it, it's been dormant for so long and it triggers so many new trips, it was subject to a, a traffic impact study and in order to get a traffic impact permit. And if you recall, the way that the town code is written, the council is the one that approves that methodology, relying on our outside peer reviewer, um, usually David Parisi, um, traffic consultant, uh, traffic engineer. And then after it goes through, that, that study will be packaged with the entitlements to come to you. And then, let's just assume you were to bless the, all the permit requirements in that traffic study, then it still has to go back to council, that last piece, to give the traffic impact permit.
I actually have a, a question on the excavation that's taking place on that. It was, it was, it sounds like recommended, not only where the, the tanks were, but underneath Sir Francis Drake, that they could excavate there. Um, is that something that's going to go ahead and take place or?
We, we actually called a special meeting between, uh, their engineer and our engineer on that very special point because we wanted more, um, of a handle on, uh, what, where is this plume? How, you know, and it turns out that you're really kind of guesstimating based on the bores you, you, you do, where you did to test bores and. where you did the test bores. And you can do a lot of test bores and still find things out when you're in the ground that you hadn't anticipated. So, we came to an understanding with their engineer and our engineer on that, how we would deal with things along the way.
Another quick question on the housing element. Will we be getting a redline version of that?
You did.
Okay, and then?
Oh, and by the way, I had intended that the document that I sent out to you two weeks ahead of time, so you had plenty of time, is on the website. You will be getting tomorrow the appendix, a track line appendix that had, I intended to send out as part of that document. In the final hours of shuffling the documents with a consultant, that got left off, and so, it's coming out tomorrow. And I'll be also mentioning that the track change version of the body of the document that you received, a couple of the tables in there got inserted, and they weren't, they didn't lend themselves to being highlighted as track changes. So, I'll mention that tomorrow also. And again, this is on the town's website early, and the, tomorrow, you'll be receiving the track change appendix, and then that'll also go on the webpage where the public has access to it, in addition to a hard copy at our counter three days before the meeting.
I have a question about the F-CAC, but I can wait until the discussion item.
That would be my report.
The housing element came today?
I'm sorry?
It came today in the email?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The housing element came today in email? Oh.
No, I sent it out, I sent it out Tuesday.
Tuesday, alright.
Let me know if you didn't get it.
I missed it. I'll double check.
Yeah.
Any other questions, or should we go onto the discussion item? What do we do with public during these things that aren't?
Well, usually, the public is, you know, closed off, but you have discretion to open, to entertain and comment from the public.
Is it a quick question or a comment? Just come up to the, come up to the microphone, and a quick comment will entertain. But, we can't discuss.
Okay, I'm not going to ask you to decide anything. It's just a statement which I'm going to make, okay? This thing in which I'm seeing about this town center replanning and everything, we're using all these little tests and studies to justify it at some point. This gas station's the same thing. All the little studies that want to be done over there to see whether or not they can do the LC Bank project through there. And the real bottom line is here, it should be out to vote, and that's all I'm trying to say. And all these little studies here are ways to facade and massage the public from not really being able to do anything about it, other than a few little special meetings and stuff, okay? It should really go to vote.
Okay, well, we can't really comment on it.
Right.
But, that would be something that would be, you could bring up at open public comment period, at town council, or at any other time prior to a meeting when it's not on the agenda, so.
Let me just, let me just, let me just reiterate if I might. The public is always allowed to comment at the beginning of the Planning Commission meeting, or at the Town Council meeting, on items that are not on the agenda. When they are on the agenda, they have to wait to comment to the public comment, during the public comment period on those items. You're very patient with the public to have them be able to make a comment. Thank you.
Let's go on to our discussion item, which is agendized, which is the review of the general plan, the general plan implementation plan matrix. And the idea here, so I'm on the committee for the General Plan Implementation Committee, and what we're looking at doing is we've given each group, Planning Commission, Open Space, Fairfax Volunteers, all had items that were like to-do items for them to accomplish as part of the general plan. So, each of those bodies are going back to their respective groups, trying to get a sense of how much has been accomplished. So, we might be able to do an update and project, you know, we're 65% done with what we said in year one, which is already done, and get feedback on items that maybe should be moved to ongoing, or doing some triage and prioritization, knowing that we can't get to them all. So, that's the goal, is to get a handle on that.
Right. And I can't remember which of you were on the commission when we handed this out previously, but I brought copies of it, and it had been on your agenda previously, and it got continued because you were away when we heard it last time. And I believe, Brandon, you asked me to give a copy of my annotated copy with my little checks for things that have been completed, or asterisks, which are the higher priority, and then the things I left blank, we're sort of like, we'll get to those as we can. So, what I'd like to do, since I failed to get this in the packet, and it didn't get on the website, we really shouldn't discuss my markings. I'd just like to hand them out to you tonight. And then, again, my checkmarks are things that we've accomplished. There's a couple more in here that we will accomplish during the development of a Town Center Plan. So, I'll hand these out to you in a moment. And since we're on the topic of the implementation matrix and the first year's goals, we're now about a year and four months past the final adoption, so we're in the second year. The Climate Action Plan was actually called to be done in the second year, so we're in good time on that. We've actually accomplished quite a bit, you'll see when I give you this, that you can take with you and read. Things were accomplished with the actual adoption of the plan. We rezoned a couple of the key sites with the adoption. But, just to echo some of the concerns that were just voiced with your patients, one of the task programs articulated in the general plan, and particularly in the Town Center Element, which was the one discretionary element the town decided to add to the seven required elements that the state require, is the Town Center Element. It's on the town website. Anybody can go there. And in the back of the general plan is also the matrix that lists all the responsibilities. And it is true that one of the programs listed in the general plan under the Town Center Element is to create a Town Center Plan. And in the Planning Commission's wisdom and the Town Council's wisdom, as this thing was rolling along and took years, it had, a great deal of time had lapsed from some of the creative ideas that had come out, some of the workshops, the pedestrianization of Belinus, which is so contentious. The council made a definitive decision to not move in that direction without further public participation. So, public participation was on the radar of the Planning Commission and the Town Council when it adopted the general plan. Public participation in the creation of the Town Center Plan is what it's all about. So, this idea that there's an end run being made, and that there's a fait accompli going on, is completely and utterly erroneous. We are totally into public participation in this town, and I personally am totally into public participation. Having said that, there will be a time to discuss these very thorny issues, and that's what we're starting to lay out a timeframe for developing the Town Center Plan. It's not a done deal. Yes, there will be some contentious issues to discuss, and probably the top two will be the idea of pedestrianizing that little section of Belinus Avenue, whether you do it all the time, whether you do it none of the time, or whether you do it part of the time, a convertible street. And of course, during the Streets for People event, it happened as a test on Sunday afternoon, and I just got the email today that there's another Streets for People event coming up, so stay tuned. These little testers are going on, even without a complete bypass connection to Sir Francis Drake without using Klaus. So, again, I just really want to dispel any fear mongering that's going on out there, that there's some secret stuff going on here at all. This is all done in the public. We're doing the public's business, and that means everybody out there that's a part of this town. And I look forward to being a part of that process. And it will be fun. The other issue that will be important to deal with is, we have a mandate to look at managed parking in the general plan. Managed parking is another way of saying paid parking. And we had an expert come and give a presentation here three years ago in this room. Who wrote the Bible, forgive the term, on parking, called the high price of free parking, Dr. Shoup. And I have that on tape, and I intend to use that very expensive series, that session, as part of our background work for the Town Center Plan. So, we've got some fun, exciting planning issues to discuss as we get into the development of a Town Center Plan, and it's really important. And let me just give you one more little piece of my shtick. You know, often, the public has a problem with change. You know, people don't like change. And unfortunately, the only thing that doesn't change is change. Trees change, they grow. Sidewalks get old. We get old. Buildings get old. Things change. So, if you actually want an environment, a town like this, to stay the same, you have to be proactive in keeping it up and making it stay alive as it is, or it just dies. So, the only way to manage change is to get out in front of that change that naturally occurs and direct it. If you want it to stay the same, then you manage it to stay the same. We have sidewalks that are in disrepair. We have trees that need replanting, and new trees that need to be planted. We have circulation in the parking here that adds to greenhouse gas. We have a budget that's still challenged. We have staff that still gets worked way hard. So, these things are all tied in. And so, again, I encourage everybody to look forward to this process and to get involved.
We've had some of these test Streets for the People events. What kind of feedback mechanisms are we using? Are we getting anything from participants, from members who are residents in the community, either during the events or after the events?
I'm not involved directly with the, these, I know after the last one, we had a lot of public comment at the council level, by the people on the council that had been part of it, by the people that had organized it. And one primary person, Renee Goddard, is now on the council. Sustainable Fairfax, I believe, is doing the management of this next event. So, I keep my ear to the ground to try to see and hear how things are going. And I, it's no secret, my position on the pedestrianization, I think that, I don't think you have to do it 100% one way or the other. You can have things evolve.
I know they also made a real effort to be in communication with the police department and the fire department, both before, during, and after, to get their feedback in terms of reports of incidents, reports of people just being annoyed by traffic. So, they were proactive about trying to get feedback from the agencies, other agencies that would have been around to hear and see what happened, so.
Oh, and what, last comment on the matrix, which is how we started on this item. I'm going to work with, I haven't told Bruce this yet, Bruce Ackerman on the G-PIC to update the matrix and get us sort of where we are in two years, you know, the first two years. The good news is, about 80% of this stuff's in the first year. We never, in our wildest dreams, thought we would accomplish all that in the first year. So, the first year sort of holds into the second.
And at the last G-PIC meeting, we did talk with Bruce about having a column, adding a column, which is the update column, and trying to, and using that column either with some sort of coding, like I know that you have on there with stars and checkmarks and things like that, or estimates of percentage complete, maybe, something like that. And so, we were talking of having two columns. One is, you know, some indicator of what's been, already been accomplished underway or not yet touched, and then a notes thing for any additional notes. And so, those were the two things that were going to be added. And it's really just a reporting mechanism for us, because the G-PIC then has to report to Town Council at least once a year on progress being made toward our town plan. So, that's really where this comes up. And it's great to have your input because we don't know. And then, really, the only thing that the commission that we would do is, if you flagged for us, and maybe we could do this next time, if you flagged for us the list of ones that are incomplete that you would want our input on prioritization, or if there's any kind of major areas of prioritizing that you would like some direction from us, that would probably be the best use of all of our time.
Right now, it's the housing element.
Then, the only other question I had on that was the F-CAC, which is the Fairfax Climate Action Committee, is a subcommittee under the General Plan Implementation Committee. Can it have other non-G-PIC members of that subcommittee? That's what came up in our G-PIC meeting, was it was unclear whether it was a subcommittee, a separate committee, and we had this conversation about wanting to have other community members involved, but not wanting to make more work for staff by setting up yet another body that you have to manage and report to.
Well, the good news is, the very last line in the bylaws for the G-PIC is, you can amend the bylaws at a regular meeting. So, and it stipulates that the F-CAC is an ad hoc subcommittee that does not participate necessarily in the voting of the G-PIC.
Any other questions on that, or commissioner comments and requests? I have just a couple. Where, applications for new planning commissioners? Who, do we have them, and when are those going to be?
Yes, we have three now. And the Town Council has been discussing a different protocol for interviewing candidates. And it's my understanding, I missed the meeting, I believe, where this, at the end of the meeting where this was being discussed, but it's my understanding that they're going to have a sit-down in front of the public with the applicants, or an interview process with the applicants, prior to the night where they actually appoint. So, there's a separation between the actual interview process and then when they actually appoint. And I think, if I heard it correctly, forgive me if I'm wrong, they're going to actually have special meetings for just the interview process, where the public's invited to come and listen also, and I presume will be in this room.
So, a timeline for that, for, I'm just thinking of vacancies now. What kind of timeline?
I think they're intending to, if not, to interview prior to the next council meeting, and I'm, I think the intent was to try to appoint at the next council meeting. They know we're down two seats, and we now have three applicants, which is nice.
And then, the only other thing, I don't know if anyone else read in the patch, about the Mountain Biking Hall of Fame that used to be in Crested Butte is moving to Marin County and might possibly be in Fairfax. So, I just thought that was.
Well, as you know, I asked the same question to the retired Planning Commissioner Morgan Hall, who's the architect on that project, actually stepped down so he could present that project at your last hearing. And it's my understanding that a lease has now been signed with the owners of the old Good Earth market space, and that subsequent to the article that came out on the patch, saying that the mountain bike museum didn't have a place, it's my understanding that that place is what you approved at the last meeting, the Good Earth. So, I'm kind of curious why I hadn't been out in the press yet myself. And any of those reporters up there still awake, you could call the owners of the property, Morgan Hall, and verify this hearsay. And we're very proud of the fact that you all passed it, and that we have this exciting possibility coming to Fairfax. And it will add some nice, I think, some nice synergy to that area of town with what's going on at the gas station right now. And you all were very cooperative with making that middle space flexible also, which I think is going to help the livelihood of that property.
Anything else? Otherwise, we can adjourn.
I'll just throw one more out there, because I know you'll want to talk about, there's, isn't it, Measure A, or some county funds were approved, and it's going to be the bike lane through Sanford, through Sir Francis Drake?
Yeah, I wasn't, ah, gosh.
We don't need to talk about it tonight, but I just saw that. So, it seemed like it was kind of the corridor through here that.
Well, there's the bike spine for the children's route. And it's, it's public works technically, and when I don't have to focus on something, I.
I'll leave it alone. We'll, I'll read the paper again. Alright, thanks.
I can follow up and ask what's going on. I'd be glad to for you.
That's good news. That's what I thought. Alright. Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Adjourned.
Thank you all. Good night.